Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Rick.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members present.
Thank you very much. Before we go into the presentations, I would like to take a moment of silence for a long-term resident, Mary DeGroot. Mary was very active in Fountain for many, many years. And if you ever needed an opinion on something, you could get it from Mary. And she also is a former council member and a former park board member. And so if we could just take a moment of silence for Mary DeGroot, please. All right, thank you very much. And I just have a couple shout-outs I want to go, and then we'll do the presentations. February 15th, SRO Appreciation Day. If you would please pass appreciation on from the council for all the great things that our SROs do. And the relationships they're building with our students are absolutely invaluable. And so privileged to be in a city where they value that service and what they're doing for our children, so thank you. All right, and then we have three members from D8 that were from Representative Lamborn, given admissions to the military academies, and I think that's really exciting. We have Kai Palam, US Military Academy, Trevor Ridge, US Merchant Marines, and Brianna Durbin to the US Air Force Academy. So congratulations to those three D8 students, and they were sent letters from the city of congratulations, and I think that's really exciting. And it's a big accomplishment, so good for them. Alrighty, so first thing up is we have Dan Blankenship with Department Update for Utilities. And Dan, it says 10 minutes.
Okay.
All right.
Is my microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Dan Blankenship, Utilities Director. Paul, you gonna pull my slide show up? Thank you. The utility, I'm gonna talk tonight about the Utilities Department. Also, the Tech Services Department is, answers through my chain, and so, but we're gonna, I'm not gonna talk too much about tech services tonight. Lisa Godwin will be here, I think, at the next meeting. Okay, I'll make sure I get. Yeah, I broke it. I'm wasting my 10 minutes. But anyway, as far as the structure of the Utilities Organization, or Utilities Department, it is a department of the City of Fountain. We basically break things down into what is our Electric and Water Operations. That's something that we actually combined when we moved into the Utilities Operations Center. Previously, the operations, I guess, divisions of those two utilities were separated. But when we moved into the Utilities Operations Center, we combined those and put those under the direction of our Deputy Director, Carl Christian. We have Water Resources and Engineering, which is under the direction of Mike Fink. And then our Customer Service, which is under the direction of Brett Robinson as the manager. You can go ahead and change me there, please, Paul. I wanted to cover maybe a few of our recent accomplishments, talk, provide you with some general information, and then just share some of our current challenges with you. Recently, as you know, some of you were here and approved the Water Master Plan, probably one of the, you know, biggest accomplishments that we've made as a department, probably even as a city, in quite some time, because it went in and assessed the entire water system from basically source to tap, and has become our primary guiding document. Last year, we also completed one of the biggest projects in the history of the city as far as utilities goes, and we completed the construction of the Jimmy Camp Creek Substation, which is located at CNS and Kane, I think? Mark Shuffle? Link, Link, there we go, Link, yeah. Link, Link and Mark Shuffle officially, I guess, uh-huh. And with that project, it included three miles of underground transmission line that was constructed from north substation to the west. We also were awarded a grant from DOLA in the amount of $1.35 million to help offset the cost of a 1.6 megawatt solar array. The solar array is part of a performance contract that the city is doing, and that solar array was sized to basically generate all of the electricity that is used by all city buildings and city streetlights. So essentially, once we get this project completed, the city will be on 100% renewable energy. And then the last item I put in here, it's not as far as the magnitude of some of these other projects, but it's a smaller project that really I think is gonna make a big difference. The two things that are notable about this is this is something that all of the different workgroups in utilities, the Operations Work Group, the Customer Service Work Group, and the Engineering and Water Resources Work Group worked on together. And basically, it's just a construction raw water program. What we did was we went in and got one of our wells, one of our municipal wells that we were not using for municipal water purposes. We got it up and running, and any time that we have any major construction activity that's going on, we now direct them, the contractors, to use that water instead of our treated water. So it's actually part of, a part of our water program that we identified in the Master Plan, but it's, you know, one, one small step towards increasing the capacity of our system. Next slide, please, Paul. Just some general information. Rate, rates, we have water rates and we have electric rates. On the water side, the most recent rate increase was in March 1st of 2020. One of the approaches that I, that I have taken since I've been here and will continue to take is to look at the balance sheet. We have the revenues on one side and the expenditures on the other. And rather than continuing to just try and raise the revenues to meet the expenditures, what I'm, what we're trying to do now is look at the expenditures, and how can we reduce the expenditures so that we don't have to continually look at increasing the rates? Because we had pretty significant water rate increases in order to get into the SDS system, which was really important, because if we had not gotten into the SDS system, we literally probably would have ran out of water, or at least ran out of water capacity to grow several years ago. So, you know, we, it put us in a situation where we had to have higher water rates, but it was something that was very necessary and very important to this community. On the electric side, we, council approved two 4% raises, increases in rates, one in January of 2021, the second took place in January 1st of 2022. Those rate increases were part of a rate study that was done in the fall of 2020, and it had identified the need for some increases for multiple years. And the primary driving factor or purpose for that was the need for a second interconnection point. Prior to our increases, according to the Energy Information Administration, that's a federal, federal administration, we had the third lowest residential cost to our customers in Colorado. Our average cost per kilowatt hour to residential customers was 8.2 cents. We trailed Fort Morgan and Moon Lake Electric Association by two tenths of a cent. Even with our two 4% increases, we will still be the third lowest, because the next, next on the list is Longmont, and they're at 10.3%. So our rates would have to go up over 25% in order for us to move from third to, to fourth. And that is, that's not only municipal utilities, that is all electric utilities within the state of Colorado. The investor-owned, the cooperatives, and municipals. So we have, although we may, we may be on the high side on the water side, on water, we're very, very good and very affordable and reliable on the electric side. Every, every month, our Customer Service Group, they, their, their primary purpose is billing and collections, and they issue in excess of 20,000 utility bills monthly. 70% of those are printed and mailed, and 30% of those are e-bills. Myself, I'm on the e-billing program, so I get an email once a month, and then I go, I log in and make a payment, and I'm all done with it. And there's, there's multiple methods of payment that you can make, so. So I don't get the bill in the, in the, in the mail, and that works well for myself, and I would encourage others who may not be aware of that program to take a look at that and maybe give it a try and see if it, if it works for them. Finally, I'd like to just talk a real briefly about some challenges that, that we're facing. So Paul, if you can roll one more time, please. Obviously, I believe that our number one challenge at this point in time is treated water capacity. And that's what we identified as part of the Master Plan. We have been working on addressing that, actually prior to the approval of the Water Master Plan. And the, the primary solution is something that really came about a decade and a half ago, and that was when we purchased the gravel pits up on Mesa on the southwest side of town. And we have been working with a consulting engineer to go in. Is that my 10 minutes, Mr. Evans?
For Carl Christian, yes, sir.
But, so we've, we've been working with a consulting engineer even prior to the adoption of the, of the Master Plan, and we have recently got a report from them, and they've indicated that, that those pits, when ultimately built out, will have the capacity to meet all of our projected needs as far as, as water, water resources. But the, the number one challenge then becomes financing that. Because we have, we have significant amount of debt when we purchased the SDS. We've met and talked with our financial advisor, our financial, the underwriter of our bonds, and they have basically said, yeah, we're, we've reached the ceiling for all practical purposes for issuing debt in our water system. So in order for us to be able to grow and expand, to build, to build out the water pits, the fountain reservoir, and the water treatment facility that would be necessary to do that, we're gonna have to come up with some sort of alternative means of financing that, or create some sort of revenue in order to be able to finance that. And we've talked about, we've talked about the possibility of forming some sort of a metro district, or some sort of a special assessment-type district that would be applied to those properties, undeveloped properties within our service area. Basically, those properties that would benefit from the expansion of the water system. And so we're talking about that, we're exploring that, we're looking at other alternatives of how we could create some form of guaranteed revenue so that we could go out and finance and issue bonds to be able to start to build these improvements. In the meantime, we've been having continuous conversations with Caro Springs Utilities to get a connection, either a direct connection at the Bailey Plant to the SDS system, or a connection to their distribution system close to Fountain. And that would give us then the ability to purchase some treated water from the SDS in the, in a short term, or we could even continue to do it in a long-term basis as we developed the Fountain Reservoir and the water treatment facility there. So we're kind of taking a two-pronged approach to this, and we are starting to get to the point where we're, we're making some progress in being able to possibly make some, some firm decisions. The, the second challenge that, that we're really facing is the electric interconnection. We currently have an interconnection to the bulk electric system on the west side of Fountain. It's a, it's a dual connection, but it's on the same, it's on the same structures, so for practical purposes, it almost acts as a single connection point. We have been working with a third-party transmission provider, and there's been some developments in our region where a regional transmission organization appears to be coming in. It's kind of a quasi-federal government agency, it's called the Southwest Power Pool. And if they come into, as they have planned, we will not have to necessarily build the transmission. The third party that we've been talking to would build the transmission, and then they would then be compensated for that through the Southwest Power Pool, the Regional Transmission Organization. So it could be a very positive thing for our ratepayers. So we're, we're monitoring the RTO, the Regional Transmission Organization expansion, and we're working with the third party to be able to set up the timing so that the transmission, the new transmission interconnection would occur at approximately the same time that the, the Regional Transmission Organization expansion would occur. And then lastly, the, the third probably, or maybe equally as challenging thing that we're facing is, is technology and staffing. When Lisa comes and talks to you in a month, I think you'll probably maybe possibly be overwhelmed with how much technology that, that we're dealing with. It's, it's grown almost exponentially over the last few years. And so unfortunately, it doesn't always work, and it doesn't always work the way that it was sold to us. And so we, we spend a lot of time trying to, to, you know, to manage the technology, and, and so that's, that's, that's a huge, a huge challenge. And then staff, staffing, and keeping staffing, and we've had some, we've had some turnover, especially in, in customer service area in our electric. And so we're, we're doing things, I mean, we're compensating them, our employees, to the, to the level that it fits within our organization and it is appropriate, and, but we're doing other things to try and encourage our, our employees to, just to stay. But we have had some turnover, and that has been a, a challenge for us. And so that's, that's the, kind of the overview of what's happening with utilities at this point in time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the council members that you might have. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I have one question before I get to the lights that are on the agenda here. You mentioned that we were at the maximum of our bond, maximum bond capacity?
Yes.
And what is our bond rating at the moment?
Our bond rating, I believe, is a A minus. And in fact, when we refinanced our, we did a refinancing of bonds in the fall of last year, and we, and our bond rating dropped slightly because of our reserves in the water and electric funds.
Okay. Can you explain to some of our newer members why the bond rating is so really important?
The bond rating is really important because it has a, basically, a direct correlation on the interest rate that we get when, when, when bonds are issued. So the better the bond rating is, the basically the lower our borrowing costs are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right, Councilmember Rick.
Dan, you said that the solar array that we're getting put in is gonna pay for all our electricity to include the streetlights. Currently, people who have streetlights on their property, such as myself, get charged a flat $5 rate for, to help pay for those streetlights. Is that fee gonna go away?
No, that will not go away, and, and so thank you for asking that question, because those are the public, it will cover the, it will generate the electricity to cover the public streetlights, the ones that are actually lighting public areas. If there are individuals that maybe like yourself that have requested a streetlight to light your property, which I presume that's, that, this...
It was, the developer built it, the developer put it in, I made no request, it's just on the street corner.
Oh, okay, okay. And, and so there's a charge?
$5 a month.
Okay, that's, I'm not familiar with that, so I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to look at that and see.
Okay. And then, second question regarding water.
Okay.
You briefed a couple months ago that we had the option to get 25% of the water out of Vinatucci Well System?
Correct.
And we're not exercising that option at this time because they're not going to Zero Detect, is that still correct?
That, yeah, and actually, we, we are not utilizing that water there. We still, we had what's called an abeyance agreement. The, the agreement is between Whitefield, Whitefield Security and the Vinatucci, or the Caro Springs, oh...
Conserva, conservation, conservation, something, yeah.
It's a trust, some form of trust. And so because of the contamination, the, they obeyed the agreement to, to purchase that. We have not gone back, and even Whitefield and Security are not even using that. But yes, when, once it gets back to the point where that will be available, that's something that we're gonna have to tackle, because Whitefield and Security are not treating to Zero Detect. That's my understanding that although they're, they, they probably, that's not their standard, but with the newer plants, they're, most of the time, they probably are treating to, to Zero Detect, but that's not their standard.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll talk to you more about that offline.
Okay, you bet.
Is that it? All right, Councilmember Applegate.
Yeah. The water, the treated water that we're trying to purchase from Colorado Springs.
Yes, sir.
Now, that would be our raw water treated, right?
Yes.
So all we'd be paying for is the treatment.
Yeah, in the SDS agreement, there's provisions for what they call contracted additional capacity. And so there's a charge for conveyance and a charge for treatment. And that's what we would be, yes, we would be putting our raw water from Pueblo Reservoir into the pipeline, and we would have to pay a charge for conveying that raw water from Pueblo to the Bailey Plant, and then a charge to, to treat that. And so now we're trying, and what we're trying to figure out is then how do we get that from Bailey to Fountain? Do we go directly from the plant, or do we go to a connection on the Caro Springs, their distribution system?
But we would still get the full quantity that we own.
Yes, yes, and in fact, we have, we, we have on a normal year, whatever, a normal year, it's not a wet year or a dry year, but a normal year, we have water rights that are approximately equivalent to twice of what we need to serve our current customers. But of course, if we have a dry year, then that, that reduces that number. If we have a wet year, it increases that number. But, so we have water rights that we can, you know, use to put in the pipeline to create this additional capacity. It's just a matter of us being able to then get it to our system.
Right, and on the wet years, if we don't use it all, we still have it.
Restore it, you bet.
Okay. One other question I had was on the sandpit. Is there any way we can get federal grants of any kind?
We are, we are, there's ARPA, we're looking at that. Anything that comes down the pike, we are absolutely looking at, and we, we have, either we have a fantastic or a very lucky grant writer. Katie Helm has done a fa, actually a fantastic job. I mean, she was the one who wrote the grant for the, the solar array, and so we've, we've had some really good success, and, and we will certainly pursue that for every opportunity that we're aware of. Yes.
And I'd hate to see any more metro districts, but...
Yeah, we're, it's, you know, I don't, it's maybe not a preferred alternative, but it, it may be, you know, we're, we're exploring it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I don't have any more lights on?
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. That's a lot of information to digest, so thank you very much. Alrighty, let's see, I am not seeing James Flowers here from the chamber. We had a Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce update, why don't we just skip that, and if he appears, then we will come back for that. Alrighty. Okay, on to item five, Board Commissions and Committee Appointments. Kimberly Bailey. You have quite the agenda here.
Evening Mayor, evening Council, thank you for your time this evening. Yes, I do have a succession of items.
Kimberly, I can hardly hear you, so I'm sure the people in the back can't hear you.
Evening, okay. Evening Mayor, evening Council, thank you for your time this evening. Yes, I do have a succession of items to present to you tonight for approval. Economic Development, Urban Renewal Director, Kimberly Bailey, City of Fountain. Your first item is appointment of five commissioners to the Economic Development Commission. A few of them are renewals, and two are new appointments. I do have a few apologies, they've had batteries not starting tonight, unhealthy children tonight, so I've had a couple of fallouts, and I apologize for that. But I do have one member with us, and that is Nicole Reinhardt behind me. She has actually been serving as our ex officio on Economic Development Commission for the last five years. She is now moving into a seated board appointment position. So with that repositioning of her, she is actually serving an inaugural one-year term under the bylaws, and then will be succession years going forward if she chooses to continue to serve with us.
You didn't tell her it was a lifetime commitment to get her on? Okay.
No, no, I don't like to scare my board members away that way. So her inaugural term will actually expire in 2023. Our other new appointee is Ms. Mercedes Davis. She is a one-year term, she would also expire in 2023. She actually has a grandfather who was a prior seated city council member, Mr. Donald Griffin, if anybody remembers him, and so she's super excited to get involved with the Economic Development Commission. Our three renewals include Mr. James Flowers, serving with the Chamber of Commerce, Harville Small, who's been with us, his, this is going on his second term with us, and Ms. Wondeline Thomas is our legacy member, this would be her 10-year commitment in serving with the Economic Development Commission. So with that said, it is recommended by staff that all five members be appointed to serve on behalf of this particular board. I'm glad to address any questions you may have.
I have a question more for Sylvia, in terms of how you'd like us to do this, each member individually, or can we just adopt the recommended terms as EDC?
The motion can be made to appoint the board members as stated by Ms. Bailey.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Kimberly, or are any of the members here would like to say anything?
Nicole is my only member for EDC, would you like to say anything? Or? No.
Okay. Wants to go home. All right. Mayor Protem Estes.
I make a motion to approve all five board applicants to the Economic Development Commission as term specified.
And Councilmember Applegate?
Yes.
Okay, do you have one more light on? Okay. Okay, that's fine, just make sure you didn't have a discussion afterwards. Okay, unless there's any further discussion on these nominations from anyone, and I don't see any lights, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. And Kimberly, I see you're staying up here. So now you have the appointment of two board members to the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council, tonight. So the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority, I do serve as their executive director as well, and they are having two vacancies being fulfilled tonight. So I do have those two members actually with us, if you would mind standing. I have Dixie Schneider and Logan Bros, is that how it's, Bros? I'm getting to learn my new members' names. So these are new appointments under the FURA bylaws. Each appointment is for a five-year term. They bring quite a specialty of talents with them on some of the visions that FURA has under its belt right now, and we are recommending them for each of their inaugural five-year terms as proposed under this commentary.
Great. Would either one of you like to come forward and say anything or?
They're shy, they're shy.
I highly doubt that, but they just don't want to be on YouTube. All right, all right, well, that's really, really exciting, so thank you very much. And I did read through your applications, so thank you for all that skills you're willing to bring to that board. All righty, what is the desire of the council here? Councilmember Corey?
Move that we approve the two board members for the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome to everybody. Returning members, thank you, and Wondeline, I think you've beat my record on EDC. All righty. Okay, so our next item is item six, if we have any city council agenda requests, city councils shall use this time to request any items for future consideration. Mr. Councilmember Rick?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Corey?
Nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Estes?
Nothing.
Councilmember Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Duncan?
I have nothing.
Okay, seeing, and I have nothing either. All right, we'll move right on. Okay, item seven, public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. I do have one card from Jean Smith of Whitefield and she would like to discuss the sound system. And we talked about it last night.
Me again. I'm wiping the egg off my face. At your last city council meeting, I'm a, you know, I've been very upset for quite some time because as in the audience, we can't hear you, and I've complained and complained. And last city council member was a good example. I heard when you were discussing landscaping, I heard new development, which I meant, to me, it meant the property owners. I heard and saw designs for landscaping. I did not hear one critical thing, which was, who's going to pay for it? I went off on a tangent there at the end, for which I apologize. I'm, as I said, it's important to hear what city council is saying. And thank you for the earphones, you are coming through loud and clear and, that's right, so I will stop complaining. Thank you.
You are free to express your concerns anytime you would like, thank you.
It's nice to know they're working.
And, yeah, it's really nice to know that, that they're working really well for you. And hats off to everybody who's worked on that, so thank you. All righty, are there any other citizens in the audience that did not turn in a card that would like to say something? And we don't have any questions online either, so we will move on to the next item, the consent agenda. I do have one item, so whoever makes the motion, I ask you to remove item F at the request of staff, then they would like to move item F to new business. So I have F. Mr. Blankenship, is that correct, item F? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, item F, now, if you want to remove it, you can, but I have a request from staff to, okay. So all items listed in the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. And so, do I have, I see a light, Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E only.
Is that motion correct, Ms. Huffman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all righty, we have a, oh my goodness, I don't know who was the next light.
Oh.
We'll go with Councilmember Applegate.
Which one?
That's Councilmember Corey.
Okay, well, I think I was last.
Okay.
I'll second.
Arguing over who's going to second it, okay.
No, I'm just saying, just saying.
Okay, is there any discussion or anything else? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. All right, believe it or not, with item eight, we have no old business tonight, so we're on to item nine, new business. We have id- consideration of items removed from the consent agenda. We have item F, Resolution 22-007, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Fountain and Ranger Underground LLC for underground hori- I have to take a second, horizontal boring operations. And you are not C. Clark?
I am not C. Clark.
All right.
C. Clark is at home, but I'm standing in for him. Yeah, Cody Clark is our general foreman in electric. We anticipated this being on the consent agenda, but I was informed this afternoon by our city clerk that exceeded the dollar amount for, for the count, for the consent agenda. So this is actually a routine item for the past several years. We contract with a company to do underground horizontal boring. Basically, we have, I think it's 60-some percent or more of our electric distribution system is underground. And so, we're constantly in the process of upgrading the older parts of that system or making repairs when, when necessary. And so, we have a pretty significant need for the, the boring, the horizontal boring for, in order to, to, to repair or replace our systems. And so, we've worked with this particular company for the last few years and they've actually held their prices for, for the last, I think, two or three years. So we are recommending that, that the council approve Resolution 22-007, approving the agreement between the City of Fountain and Ranger Underground for the 2022 underground horizontal boring operation and authorizing expenditures up to $300,000, which is the amount that was budgeted and in the approved budget for 2022. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Rick?
Question for Ms. Huffman. What is our limit for the approving on the consent agenda without having to go?
$275,000.
Thank you. That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
I believe that I had asked several months ago to bring that up for the discussion item to raise the amount of the consent agenda. Can we put that on for the next council, please? That was set probably seven or eight years ago and things have gone up significantly since then, so...
We've had a little bit of inflation.
Just a little, just a little. Okay. All righty, Mayor Protem Estes?
I had to get in on this one because how often do you get to say this number? I move to approve Resolution 22-007 and approve the service agreement for underground horizontal boring operations with Ranger Underground.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you. You approved 007 on 2/22/22.
You're shaken and not stirred.
On the, on the Tuesday, right? All righty, okay.
2/22/22.
Yeah, and it's a Tuesday, yeah. All right, new business, item 9B, Resolution 22-008, a resolution adopting the transportation master plan 2022, Brandy Williams. Brandy, I think you have something to confess as you come forward. It says both of these items are going to be five minutes each. I highly doubt.
Well, we're really hoping for 10, so I talked to Joanie and she said, how about five and five and we'll see what happens. The second one really ties into the first one, so the first, the second one's going to explain, be explained, and then after that, hopefully, any questions are answered with the first one. So Scott Asher from Wilson and Company is actually going to do the presentation, mostly for those of you who weren't on council when we brought this initially to city council, so feel free to ask any and all questions that you may have, but for those of you who are here, it's a refresh and for those of you who are new, it gives you an idea and our apologies for the delay in getting that giant 200-page document to you. I'm sure you've read it all thoroughly and yes, any questions, turn them over to Scott Asher. You ready, Scott?
Good evening, council. I'm Scott Asher with Wilson and Company. I'm the project manager, been working with the city on updating the master transportation plan for the City of Fountain. The last update was done in, I believe it was 2010, and so, we've been, we started this process in 2020, I think it was the summer of 2020, and was right in the thick of COVID and so made it challenging. But what I'd like to do is just sort of do a quick update and overview of the project of the transportation master plan and where we're standing with it. There's no, been real no material changes since we presented this last year to council and so, just looking for the, the adoption today. So we go to the next slide. The, the transportation master plan that we've done has really taken a regional planning context and overall, I'm looking at different plans that have been done with El Paso County, PPACG, which is the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, as well as state and federal functional classifications on roadways, sort of figure out what all is in the system today and what the growth of Fountain is going to look like and what the needs are as we move forward. So we just want to take a real, real regional look at this and be consistent with all the other jurisdictions. As we go to the next slide, this is sort of the, the system needs. On the left-hand side of the graphic, it shows the, the existing sort of network and within the City of Fountain that is sort of the collector and above type classifications. And it shows what the actual volumes would be on the different roadways. On the right-hand side of the graphic is what the new network sort of looks like and how that traffic is distributed significantly between those. The next graphic shows it more visually, so you can sort of see where the problem areas are. Go to the next slide, there we go, is in, is in most scenarios, red is bad, green is good, and so, as you can sort of see with the proposed growth that's happening within the, within the Fountain region and in this, this general area, a lot of your existing network gets overtaxed, becomes failing network. As we build out the, the new roadway network to accommodate some of the growth in the area as well as address some of the existing deficiencies within the existing system, it really does go and improve the system, so you have basically everything running more in that level of service, A, B, C type scenario where you really want it to be from the community standpoint. So as we, as we develop that and looked at what the traffic impacts were, we go to the next slide, which is the overall transportation, transportation plan network. I know you have in the packet and in the, the plan has blowups of the different, different sections, you can see more detail, but overall, you can sort of see where there's some major, major improvements and expansions of the roadway networks sort of in the southeast part of the city and where some of the future development is, including Kane Ranch, some of the areas up to the northeast and El Magre area where some of those developments are in Mesa Ridge. There are some other improvements throughout the system as we look at expanding the capacity of some of the roads to meet the, the current traffic needs. Another piece of the transportation master plan, and this is what's next on your agenda, is we developed, updated the street classification table for design criteria and classifications for the roadways within the city. We expanded it significantly, working with Brandy and, and her team on getting a more, getting more classifications out there for development to be able to utilize to meet the needs of, of different types of communities that could be developed within the City of Fountain. These are also very similar and we wanted to make sure that they weren't significantly different from El Paso County and City of Colorado Springs or the surrounding municipalities, so you don't have big changes and disconnects when, when you have jurisdictions that butt up or overlap each other as, as things happen. The next slide, we talk about some of the costs and funding, and one of the things that, that as you read through and you look at this, is there, there are significant cost infrastructure changes. We wanted to take a look at what the risk and the cost responsibility was and eligibility. And there's a lot of regional facilities within this plan, which would fall outside the purview of what would be responsible for the City of Fountain or the development in the city would really be responsible for doing. That's about a $676 million investment over, you know, the next 20 to 60 years, right? Some major facilities that would need to be built out. Probably the most significant is the, the power's extension down to I-25 as it goes south is, is one of the biggest costs in there. There's other, and, and out of that 676 million, about 586 of that would be eligible for state and federal money and, and funding to be able to, to leverage that. They'd need local matches most likely, but you could actually utilize a lot of other sources of money to help fund those. In addition, addition, there's El Paso County, some of the, the roadway network is currently within the county and could be covered through existing PPRTA projects that the county is doing that then could potentially come into City of Fountain ownership, as well as some of the county impact fee money that is being done for development that's in the county currently that could potentially be annexed into the City of Fountain in the future. Some of the Fountain costs overall is, when we're looking at is around $380 million over the next 20 to 60 years, again, not a small amount, but that is, much of that is really driven by future development and, and costs that would be grow within the city. There's about 140 million of that is eligible for state and federal money and about 240 million is sort of up in the air yet of what type of funding is under determined funding for that right now. There's also about $80 million of infrastructure that would be funded through private development that's part of the transportation master plan, as some of the major developed areas would need to grow and their, their systems would be, would become City of Fountain roadway network, but they would be built through the development process. That's a lot of stuff in a very short period of time. So that overall is sort of the nutshell of the transportation master plan and the way it laid it out. There's obviously a lot more detail in the study itself and, but that is a general summary. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions. You've mentioned changes to some road classifications?
Yes.
Brandy, those would have to go through PPACG to have their roads reclassified?
So those that we would be trying to get federal funding for would have to go through their process and we've already done that. Indiana Avenue was one of those. So as we went through this exercise, we worked with PPACG, so we've updated all the ones we needed funding for there.
Okay, good.
And then if there's any that don't match, we can address those, but we wanted to get through this process first and then, yes, we'll take it to PPACG.
Okay, and then my second question is the, the slide here where he's talking about state and federal fund eligibility over the next 20 to 60 years, we would need to get those projects onto the 2045 long-range transportation plan, right?
Most definitely.
Okay, but they're not on there at the moment?
Uh, some of them are, some of them aren't. We actually put Powers Boulevard on there, which is the big chunk of this, but we, and we had to do that to get that P E L going. So Powers Boulevard's on there. Anything else that needs to be on there, we'll probably work with Caro Springs because a lot of these will be going into Caro Springs depending upon how the AMARA annexation process goes, but we're working closely with PPA CG and everybody in the region to make sure that they're getting covered.
Yeah. And that's a really big deal for people who might not know, because if you're not on the two thousand and forty, if you're not on the forty-five long-range transportation, whatever, plan, you don't get the money. You don't even get considered for the money, you don't get discussed for the money. So it's, you gotta get on the list to be considered for the money.
Correct.
So, okay. Councilmember Rick.
Two questions for Brandy. The street design criteria and standards. I'm assuming you got feedback from Bob McDonald, everything's okay from our street superintendent?
Yeah. So this actually went through a bigger stakeholder process. So it went through HBA, it went through other engineers in the region. We talked about it with Bob, we've talked about it through pretty much everybody we could possibly find to look at this. Bob's looked at it. I don't know if Scott weighed in or not, but I think at some point in time Scott said, I trust you. So, so yes, we've covered this with everybody. We did have extensive conversations with Mayor Thompson. We would like bigger residential streets. We would like people to be able to park on both sides and drive two cars down them, but we had to strike a balance and we had, again, those extensive conversations and said, this is probably as good as it's going to get unless we want to open it up to a bigger conversation, a bigger community, more asphalt, conversations with developers. So we tried to balance what public safety was looking for, what the public was looking for, what, again, Bob could afford to maintain, and what the developers were going to build. So, yes.
Okay. That was, that was the second part of the question, did it go through HBA?
Correct.
Or some organization? For the rest of the council, I would tell you, while I was on planning commission, this did go through planning and planning did approve it. So thank you for that.
We appreciate all of your input on that as well.
She said, input from lots of different, anybody she could think of. Councilmember Applegate.
Yeah. I noticed on there that link is a minor arterial. Now, being a minor arterial, it should be forty-five to forty miles an hour. It's thirty right now. What do you have to do to adjust that after, I see, I know it's being rebuilt, but after that, what do you do to adjust the speed limit on that?
Uh, worked with Bob McDonald as far as getting those signs ordered and, and having that conversation, a lot with this body, because the people who complain about speeds complain to their council members. And just as an aside, we're going to have that conversation with El Paso County up at Fountain Mesa, north of where the roundabout's going. That speed limit is causing excessive speeding in that area. So while the classification allows for that higher speed limit, there are also instances in which you know for public safety it needs to be lower than that. So these are the guidelines, but there could always be variations given the individual circumstances.
Well, in Fountain Mesa, the north end of Fountain Mesa, nobody goes thirty.
I know.
So that's just.
High.
It's, it's a minor arterial, it should be forty anyhow, so.
Except for they go sixty, seventy.
Well, then they need to take it, but forty would be.
Correct.
That was a main concern at a lot of those community meetings for that project.
Yeah.
Was the excessive speed in, on that part of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to get into the speed limits tonight, though. We're just going to talk about this. So Councilmember Rick, if it's, unless it's to do with a speed limit.
It's not to do with the speed limit.
Okay.
But the question I have, and this is slightly off topic. It seems when we've been repaving our roads, whether it be chip seal or complete reseal, all of our roads seem to have double yellow lines on them right now. Is that something your office is driving, or is it just the nature of when we re-stripe it, there's some law out there that says it has to be double yellow lines or?
Most of them are trying to just remove and replace.
Okay.
So is there a specific location that you would want us to look at? There's a lot more involved if you want to take it from a double yellow to the option for the community to pass each other with site distance and speed, as Councilmember Applegate mentioned. So that exercise can be done. It's probably more of an issue of cost, because I think Bob's trying to repair the roads as much as he possibly can, the least amount of cost. So it's much easier for him to simply remove what was there, replace the striping that was there, and not go through the exercise to then establish where you can and cannot have those passing zones.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion?
Mayor, if I could make a comment real quick. First of all, we'd like to thank Scott and Wilson and Companies. They've been a great partner to work with on this and very reputable company who does projects both in the county and Colorado Springs, which is going to really pay off for us with this plan. It's been in our discussions with Colorado Springs and El Paso County as we've been discussing the development on the east side, that this be utilized as that regional, and they've all verbally agreed to do that, so that's a big benefit for us. And the plans that we have seen so far with AMARA match what Wilson has in this plan. So I think that's been a big benefit for us as well. And we've thrown at Scott some of the numbers, you can see a billion dollars when you combine these two. Then we asked him kind of mid-plan to break that up, so we could just get fountains depending on what happens out east. But also I'd like to make sure that the council understands, that the general public understands. Oftentimes when we do these overall master plans, we will hear comments, well, the city did a master plan, why didn't the city follow it? Right? I'm sure even the new council members have already heard that, and I can see by Tamara's look, she's heard it. And a plan is great, and this is extremely valuable. If we didn't have this plan, we wouldn't be eligible for a lot of those grant funding opportunities up there. So it will pay off a hundredfold for having this. But that being said, we don't have a funding mechanism for the three hundred and eighty million, or even best-case scenario, the undetermined funding of the two hundred and forty million. So at this point, I want to make sure everyone understands that we're not over, overpromising and underdelivering by we have a, a funding mechanism that we can start working on this plan today, next year, or four years down the road. So we have to work together with the public and with the council. Now we have a good plan moving forward, but now how do we pay for it? Because if you can't pay for it, it's a concept plan, not an actual plan that we can fund and move forward with. So just want to make sure if anyone gets asked, we won't be moving forward with any of those big projects, because we just flat out don't have a way to fund it at this point. But Scott, thank you again. You all have been fantastic to work with. We truly consider you a partner, so thank you.
I'd like to, thank you for summarizing it, and I think the way that most of us could actually understand. And it wasn't in engineerese, so thank you. That's important, right? All righty. So we're still on item B. Are there any further questions on item B and what was presented to you on that report? And we do have a copy of it. If a citizen would like to get a copy of this, where are they going to find it? Are they on the city website or what's the best way for them to access this?
Sylvia, is there a way to, to get this?
Can we probably do a link, maybe? I don't know if they can, I don't know our website capabilities.
We can do a link, like we did the feasibility study, and you can do that.
Yeah, we'll link it.
Oh, we'll put a link on the city website? Yeah, because it's over two hundred pages. I wouldn't print it, but. Yeah. I probably made everybody's day when I didn't call up and ask to have it printed, so, yeah. All righty. So is there any further questions? Okay, seeing none? Do I have a motion? We're on item nine B. Councilmember Rick.
Move to approve Resolution twenty-two dash zero zero eight, a resolution adopting the transportation master plan, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Mayor Protiem Estes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
All right, Brandy. And just for clarification on this item, item nine C, when you're at the last sentence on your agenda where it says generally section twelve point oh four, it's going to be point two five oh is a correction on that. And that has been corrected everywhere. So first reading of ordinance number one seven seven one, an ordinance replacing the street design standards chart, City of Fountain two thousand and eight, with the street and roadway design criteria standards Fountain Municipal Code twelve point zero four, construction generally section twelve point zero four, point two five zero. Brandy, you going to redeem yourself with five minutes for this one?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. I hope it doesn't take five minutes. Councilmember Rick asked enough questions, and I think I covered most of it. Is, yes, it was brought throughout the community. Given the different ADT, we wanted to make sure that we had the flexibility and the variety within the city to really get the streets that we were looking for. The likelihood of a major arterial is probably pretty low, but it's nice to have it there just in case the amount of traffic coming from the east necessitates us making our roadways larger within the City of Fountain and how we would partner to do that. So all of these may or may not get constructed, but they're here and at our disposal if we need them, just like the expressway. The expressway will eventually be a C dot road, Powers Boulevard. But as people are coming through the process, they need to know what that classification looks like so that they can preserve and reserve that right away as they develop. And then, yes, you are correct, it's now going to be section twelve point zero four, point two five zero. And Ms. Huffman reminded me that it will be effective after final publication, so that's also one change. Any questions?
Okay. Is there any questions from any council members? Okay, seeing none. Can we have a motion, please? Mayor Protiem Estes.
I move to approve ordinance seventeen seventy-one on first reading.
Councilmember Corey.
Second.
And Councilmember Duncan, were you going to make a second, or did you have a question?
No question.
Okay. All right, any, any further discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
All righty, we're going to move on to correspondence, comments, and ex officio reports. Mr. Trainer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Firstly, I wanted to address real briefly, to follow up to the question that Councilmember Rick asked earlier about the solar. The way the solar is set up, if you recall, that is through a, the performance contract that Dan mentioned, allows us to basically take the cost savings and use that to fund the infrastructure. So at the end date, we're still going to continue to pay our utility bills, but now with those utility bills with the cost savings will go towards paying for the infrastructure. So we still have to pay for the solar array itself, so we'll still have the existing fees on there. So I just wanted to make sure I reiterated that.
So Scott, real quick.
Yes, sir.
So there's no credit going back to the residents? Just wanted to make sure that they understand that.
We still have to pay for the actual infrastructure that's allowing us.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, that's right. Yeah, it's the same thing, you know, when we improved our city facilities, HVAC allows us to save energy costs, and those energy costs, the energy savings went around to pay for the actual improvement. So at the end of the day, it's a wash with what we pay, but now we've got upgraded facilities. Hope that makes sense a little bit, but it's the same concept on the solar array. And then I also wanted to mention with a couple other, some of these items that came up tonight several times, it's been mentioned, you know, are we looking at grants and things like that? Right now, we're spending a lot of time looking at the infrastructure investment and Jobs Act, it's also known as a bipartisan, what, bipartisan investment bill?
Just BBB works.
Thank you. I'm going to lose the track of all the acronyms, but also the ARP of funding as well. There's a lot of funds that are coming through those. And so PPA CG is working on, with the managers group from the region, working on creating some various groups to focus on the, the different aspects of those funding bills so that we can kind of tap in and partner up with our fellow colleagues, figure out how can we tap into some of those potential funds coming, coming to our area. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. And then finally, really appreciated the conversation the city council had in their workshop on Saturday discussing potential ballot measures, and we're establishing a couple teams to work on some ideas that we'll bring back to the council on those, a couple options that the council discussed on potentially moving forward. So wanted to report that to council as well. Thank you. That's all I had.
Just a quick reminder to everybody, we're finally having some Colorado weather for the next few days. So because of the temperatures along with the snow, from the depth you saw our plows being able to get today, that's going to be consistent for the next few days. They can only go so low before they start tearing up our asphalt. And they were out salting, but because the temperatures are so low, you're going to see it possibly work in some intersections, but not others. This is a good old, we live in Colorado. So when I get calls from folks, one of my first questions is, when did you move here? Where did you move from? And when I hear Texas and California, I go, this is finally good old Colorado weather. So it's going to be cold, it's going to be slippery for the next few days. So if you get calls, let everyone know they're out, they're working shifts, but they're not going to get it any lower than probably what we've got today.
And we're not responsible for Highway eighty-five or Mesa Ridge Parkway? I'm going to say it every time, because I know, keep reminding them, because I, I know we get calls, because our roads were done a lot better than Highway eighty-five today. I'm just saying. Okay, I drove it on purpose, so. Troy?
Nothing from me tonight.
All right.
No, ma'am, nothing.
All right. Dan, anything else?
I think I've had enough already. Thank you very much.
Sylvia? Nothing tonight. No? Brandy, anything else? All right, IT?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight? No updates on our new fancy equipment we can't use?
We, we do have vendor coming out for training. We're, we're finalizing the date, but right now we're, we're looking, the, the tentative date that we have that we're working with the city clerk's office is, is March fourteen, which will mean that, if I understand correctly, we have a city council meeting on the fifteenth due to reschedule. So it should be in place for that meeting, and we'll, we'll certainly be here to assist members of council with getting used to new equipment prior to that meeting.
Okay, so that is, Sylvia, is that what we're going to do at our five thirty, everybody's come at five thirty on the first meeting to get training on this really quick, five fifteen, five thirty? We'll set that later, but just so people can have it on their calendars?
Yes. I just haven't sent it out, because the tentative date is based on the flight schedule for the vendor. So yes, if you want to go ahead and put it on your calendar tentatively for the fifteenth, at about five fifteen, that gives everybody enough time to run through the system a couple times before the meeting. But we also are going to have the vendor out on the fourteenth, hopefully. And so if you choose to come out on the fourteenth while we're doing the training, you're more than welcome to do that as well.
Okay. All right. So I just want to put a save the date thing on there, because the new system is not only your microphones, but it's how we vote, too. So we don't have to raise our hands for the whole meeting or something, right? All righty. Okay. All righty. And let's see. Hang on just a second. Councilmember Applegate, I'm going to start with you tonight. Did the Pike's Peak Regional Building Board meet?
Yes, we did. I had some information on that, but it's, it'd be pretty boring to go over it here. Just talks about numbers and what they're amassing. They did do a half a million dollars in net profit during the last month.
Month?
So they do deal in pretty large amounts of money.
And is that, a lot of that coming from permits?
Yes. The majority of it. There's other things, but that's the line shares, the permits.
Anything else?
No, that's about it.
Did they, an ESA?
No, I haven't been there yet.
Oh, you haven't been there yet? Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
ESA, I'm sorry. ESA meets every other month on odd-numbered months.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Thank you. Now I have to keep track of odd-numbered months. Okay. All right. Mayor Protiem Estes, did CB, CDBG meet? Not yet. Or Urban Renewal?
Urban Renewal did meet. We had discussed the two new members tonight and just kind of making plans moving forward. They did decide on a contractor for Woodman. And so we're just trying to get moving forward on that. And CDBG will have their first meeting coming up.
Okay.
And so the, the grant applications have been coming in, so.
Great. All right. Hopefully we're in that pile of grant stuff, huh?
We usually are.
All right. And Councilmember Hinton, did the housing authority, did I get to that meeting yet?
Yes, I've been to two. We met last Thursday. It was a good, productive meeting. We're just going over certain things that have been happening in the city. We had a, an eviction that happened this past month, and just kinda debunking some of the myths that were out there and that came across, and so, um, things are going well. Um, I'm trying to get a tour to see everything that we have in the city, so, uh, I'm trying to get that set up soon.
Okay, all right, anything else?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Okay, alrighty, Councilmember Rick?
Um, nothing tonight, ma'am.
Okay, you sure? Okay.
I got something to ask offline later.
Okay, alrighty, Councilmember Corey?
Nothing at this time.
Alrighty, Mayor, and we already had your turn, you have one more thing to say?
Yeah, I'd, I'd still like to just give a shout-out to Mary DeGroot's family, um, they moved here about the same time my parents did, about 1955. I've known Mary my entire life, and it's just, it's a huge loss, my mom, it really hit her hard, 'cause they were the two original houses on our block. She was also instrumental in starting the Historical Society here, and so I just wanna, you know, she did so much for this community, not just council and not just the park board, but she was just so involved in this community, and it's wonderful to see some residents that take such interest in their community, and it's just, it's gonna be a hard loss for the community, and I hope people step up and take her place, because we need people like that. Oh, and her funeral will be, um, the public viewing will be held on Friday, this coming Friday, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Dove Wit Funeral Home. Grave-side services will be held at 11:00 AM at Fairview Cemetery and Fountain, and on, um, that'll be the 26th, and followed by a memorial service at 11:30 at the First United Methodist Church here in Fountain.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Duncan?
I have attended a couple of CML meetings, uh, PPCAG meetings, I have been on the watershed meetings with, uh, Mayor Protiem Estes. I just would like to thank everyone in the community that donated to the Fountain Youth collection of, uh, scarves, hats, and coats, I'm sure, um, we donate those, they'll be real appreciated with the weather that we're having. We meet on Saturday, so we'll determine which, um, entity will get those, and that's all I have.
All right, and I would like to give a shout-out to, uh, Brandy, but she already left. Uh, at the PPACG meeting, um, they wanted us to adjust how projects, uh, the projects that are submitted to that 2045 plan go through our citizen and our technical advisory committee boards. And they gave us a piece of paper and wanted us on the fly, without any numbers or any rationale, just like up arrows and down arrows, to, uh, re-rate those projects. And during the meeting, I asked if those projects had been through our citizen advisory committees and our tech committee to make those changes, and I was told they had not been. So I asked for that motion to go back through our technical advisory committee, and kinda fired off a, let, emailed a Brandy with a lot of questions of this and that and the other thing, and it was like, you know, "You don't have to answer all these questions," I'm kinda venting, too, 'cause I'm a little frustrated with the process, because we set up these processes to go through our citizens, who have a lot of expertise and spend a lot of time on these boards, and we really depend on the technical advisory committee as our engineers to rate things in a certain way. As a result, it did get delayed a month, so next month we have to do some things a little quicker than we normally do. Uh, but Brandy went to, and I kinda went to fight for this city, and, uh, as a result, hopefully at the next PPACG meeting, and there, it's, it's 10 years down the road, but like I told everybody earlier, if you're not on the plan, you don't get the money, hopefully an extra half a million dollars, if that gets approved. And, uh, so hopefully that will, so, uh, you know, I appreciate Brandy and all the fighting that everybody does for us, because, uh, if you're not on the plan, you don't get the money, right? So, alrighty, so with that, unless anybody has any other discussion or comments, or last things they forgot to say?
I do have one more comment.
Oh, you do, one more, okay, Councilmember Hinton?
Sure, I would just like to remind the public and council, please keep our soldier members in your mind and your thoughts and prayers, we are at a tense and point right now, so I just ask that you continue to keep them in your forefront of your mind.
Yeah, I drove over, uh, coming home today and all those tanks on the rail yard, yes, thank you very much for, for mentioning that. Alrighty, all right, we have no executive session tonight, so with that, we are adjourned.